Thank you. Any amendments to the meeting agenda, otherwise I take a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have two items. One is under the consent, 1.4. And I guess if council would allow me just to speak to it and not move it, I would do that. And then I have an addition under council items would be like C.1 or G. Depending on it's relevant to item C under council items. And I handed out my RCA to everyone and put one in the back of the, in the book in the back.
All right, is council willing to let her address the 1.4 in the consent agenda beginning? First and foremost, do you want to move it out to council items? I'm okay with just speaking to it when we get to the consent agenda.
All right.
And I would just put your RCA here since it looks like an apology as part of C.
Part of C, all right.
Any other changes? I'll accept the motion here.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Lieutenant Heath.
Well, good evening, everyone. Mayor, council, city staff, citizens of Nowland. Just wanted to let you know, we talked a little bit before about when the council meetings come early at the beginning of the month, we don't get our calls for service numbers until, and we'll have them tomorrow, and they'll be sent out before I end. So I don't have all of the calls for service numbers for the month. But I did go through, I can go through our computer system and look at some of the more notable calls for the month. I did want to point out that this month there was only one call to Barnum. For the year, I think we're at a total of six, which is a reduction from where we were year-to-date last year, so that's a good thing.
Excuse me, Lieutenant, so are we now to the point where we can trust our year-over-year numbers?
Yes. Yep, I would say that we should be able to look at 2017 and 2018, and that should be an accurate reflection of where we're at.
So our, hopefully things are improving there, and they're not just getting less calls, but six versus 19 is terrific, so.
Very happy to see, and I know our patrol division command staff does meet with Barnum, and I've gone out there and met with them as well, just to try to keep some dialogue going and to see where things are at, and just to have the communication. I think it's been beneficial, so. And then I just, I wanted to point out a couple of things. You know, first of all, it's springtime, and it's, well, maybe it's springtime, or we'll get to springtime soon. And I just wanted to remind motorists, and people are going to be out walking more, kids are going to be out on bicycles more when the weather finally breaks. So just keep that in the back of your mind when we're out and about, that there's going to be something added, that if the snow goes away, we'll be looking for people or having to watch for people along the roadways and whatnot. So just something to remind people of. And then this was a very interesting month, looking back through the calls. You know, I talked about different types of fraud and things that happened and the identity theft issues we have, and I came across just four different ones that I wanted to highlight for the council, four different calls that our deputies came out and took, just because they're all different types of scams, but they're scams nonetheless. And I was, I was really surprised to see, we've seen them in other communities before, but this was the first month I've seen this varied amount here concentrated in Nowland. So I was, I was very interested to see that. On March 9th, a deputy responded to a suspicious phone call report in the 1-8500 block of Cleary Road. The reporting party told our deputy that he had received a phone call from somebody identifying themselves as being a government agent, and they said he had a warrant for his arrest, and if he didn't contact a specific phone number and make arrangements for payment, that the, in short time, the government would be on their way to his home to seize him and his property. It was interesting. When the man started asking some questions, the person on the other end of the phone hung up and didn't want to talk. And then on the 15th, a deputy took another suspicious phone call, excuse me, a suspicious activity report in the 1-8900 block of Burns Parkway. The reporting party there received a phone call from a male saying he was with the IRS, and that the reporting party needed to pay some fines or they would be charged. And the person who called us hung up on the, on the fake IRS person, and, and we tried to work the number backwards and weren't able to make contact with anybody. And then on the 16th, we had a deputy respond to a fraud and identity theft case in the 1-9500 block of Nowland Boulevard. That person reported that their identity had been fraudulently used to open a cellular telephone account, and the only reason they caught it was because they were monitoring their credit. They took a look at their credit statement, and, and lo and behold, they could see this new account come up, and when they looked into it, it had nothing to do with them. And then on the 30th, one of our deputies took a suspicious phone call report in the 21900 block of Waco Street. That person received a voicemail message saying that they were a private contractor working for Anoka County, and that the person should consider this phone call their official warning, that there were going to be fines and things imposed, and that they needed to contact a number and make arrangements for payment. And our deputy came out and actually tried to call the number back again and wasn't successful in making contact with anyone. What's really fortunate about all of those cases that I outlined, while it's bad that we have them, all the people were, did the right things, and there was no financial loss to anyone. The person monitoring their credit account was able to, through a police report and everything else, work with the company to get that removed, so they didn't have a loss. And the other three that I outlined, none of them fell victim to the, to these people calling, and unfortunately, that's not something we always see. There's some people, you know, I know in the last month of one of our cities, we had several people, and not just older people, there are younger people who are spending thousands of dollars calling for these scams. And the people that are doing them are smart enough that there's applications that they can buy for their phones, so when they call, you can pick up your cellphone using one of these applications and call a number that you, that you're trying to reach, and when it shows up on their caller ID, it comes up from a completely different number. And no matter how hard you try to trace it back, you can't do it. So, and those are things that are readily available for people out there to purchase, and the people in the criminal world do that, and they use it. So some of these come back to overseas places, and it's just a, it's obviously profitable for them because they keep doing it.
I'd say they must be having some success.
Unfortunately, but I was very happy to see that our citizens didn't, weren't victims of those this month, so. And that's all I have.
Did you say they are seeing these types of things in other cities, though? This is kind of the first time we're getting reports in Nowland, or?
We've had, we've had sporadic reports in Nowland, you know, maybe one a month, but this was the first month that I've seen four different types of these scams right here in Nowland. Sometimes we'll have some in Andover, we'll have some in East Bethel, but it was just interesting that there were four different types that we just had to deal with here in the city during the month. I haven't seen that before, so.
Council, have any questions for Lieutenant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Just as a follow-up to that, along that line, what if, what benefits are there to the residents to report them? Should they be reporting them when it happens?
Yes, they should, because what happens if, like this person that had their identity stolen and that account opened in their name, now they can go back to that account holder, or whoever created that account, excuse me, the, the business, and say, "Look, this was a fraudulent account that was opened, and here's the police report that I filed to show that." And a lot of places, a lot of businesses won't take that step of getting rid of that account and returning your funds to you unless you have that police report. Very similar, like if you have a damage to your property, most insurance companies or a lot of insurance companies depending on if you're, if you're going to make a claim and you're saying somebody else is doing it, they will require a police report before they'll process them. So a lot of the creditors and stuff like that are the same.
And I could see that for, certainly if there's property in loss, but for the phone calls?
Yes, because that way, and the reason why we encourage people to do it is that way, so in March, you got this really crazy phone call, and somehow that person was able to get your information, and in May, they open an account in your name, it helps lead back to where it was. And sometimes what happens is if we get fortunate or lucky, we'll identify one person who's involved in this, and if we can go back and if we have a phone number that was connected to this person, it might mean, you know, it might mean additional charges. And if people don't report those, we would never know that somebody was also a potential victim in this person. So yeah, it is important.
All right, I'll start calling. I just got the IRS one like last week, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, and for some people that haven't heard about this, that phone call from the IRS is one of those things that freezes you in your tracks, like, oh boy, what do I do? I see how people can fall there into it, so.
Well, and yeah, and if people aren't reporting it, it's not as widely known either, so. All right, anything else, Lieutenant? Thank you, sir. All right. Floor items. Tony Schlegel?
It is that one. Heck, as soon as he turned it off, I'm going.
Sir, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I am here to talk about the field use for Nowland Field and Twin Lakes Field, representing Elk River Youth Softball Association.
All right.
In the, in the years past, we have done the maintenance and stuff on the fields over the summertime in lieu of payment for rent of the fields. And that has, that's worked out very well for us, is we're a nonprofit organization and that kind of thing. And I was just wondering if it would be, if we could do that again this summer.
Actually, we have that on our consent agenda as a request for council action, so we will be approving that shortly after you sit down, so. Yeah, so if you, if you, in the book in the back, you'll see the actual request for council action, describing our arrangement.
Yes.
And so it will be there, and at this point, I think after our workshop last week, we discussed it, and we're going to proceed like we have in years past.
Okay.
All right. Consent agenda. Before we move the agenda, Mary wanted to talk about 1.4.
Mr. Mayor, as I spoke at the workshop, I just want to make sure that those funds are held and not spent until council has given direction on how they are to be spent.
Any concerns from the council's standpoint on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Question for Cory, whether it's, with my understanding, that's what we've always done in the past, always gone into, you know, kind of a set, sat there till we wanted to use it for some specific project. And I don't think that's changed, has it?
No, Mr. Mayor, what would end up happening is in, in our accounts, we actually have a donation, private donation fund, and it would just go in there as a receipt, and it would just be part of the receipts for the year. So if we wanted it, I mean, it will be the receipt for the year for the budget year, and then we would just start up the new budget year, and it would be just part of the beginning balance again, so.
Anything else on that?
Not at all.
Did we have a second on that motion? If not, I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, consent agenda as a whole.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move the consent agenda items 1.1 through 1.12.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lieutenant? Just before you go.
Oh, yes, sir.
Did you see our, in the consent agenda here, 1.9 was the ordinance relating to disturbances? Okay.
I haven't seen the language on it yet.
Okay.
But I did see it on the agenda.
Well, we'll get that sent over so that we're all on the same page. You can take care of that, Cory? Okay.
Sirs.
All right. Thank you. We did approve that, right? We moved, we motioned and approved, right?
Yep.
All right. Council items. Deputy clerk position update. Paul's been trying to get my attention. Do you want to have that conversation first or here?
It's up to you, I guess.
We've interviewed three candidates, and the requested compensation is significantly different between, among the three. I think we have three qualified candidates. And we haven't, we haven't gone back and asked if one candidate would accept less than they're asking, but there's quite a range in prices. It would be, and the one candidate, it's much more expensive, I guess the council would have to be convinced it's, it's worth pulling way out of our bracket to go there. The candidates in the middle would have to accept a lower offer, and the candidate that's asking for the least would have to be agreed upon by the council. There are a couple of other candidates that could be interviewed, but they tend to be in the higher bracket as well. So I guess it's up to the council, do you want to consider a higher-range salary or work with something that's in the range that we had originally proposed when we hired Lori? I think that's what, you know, the Paul's conversation with me has, has been to propose something in the, the range that we had asked Lori to take when she came on. And there's a candidate in that range, and there's a candidate would have to consider to be, change their asking to accept that range. Or would you like to hear somebody who's significantly higher than that and see if you think it's worth that? Good candidate, just a little out of our price range right now. So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is to, just to say that the candidate who I believe we could start at a lesser salary than the others is not necessarily not a good candidate. I believe that person is also a good candidate and can fit into the position, so it's not like we're settling just for less dollars.
Yes. I, I think we can get a good candidate at a lesser dollar than, and not have to go to the higher-priced candidate to get the good candidate, yes, I agree.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
What are, okay, the higher rate, wait, the higher wage one, what are the qualifications there? Is there, without having, without knowing those, it would be difficult for me to say yes or no. I, you know, we, we were not part of, and it was designed that way, not part of the committee that, that interviewed and have conversations with the, with the applicants. So I, it, it could be that, that higher wage based on qualifications and based on the ability to use those qualifications, maybe it's not out of line, I don't know, I don't...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
And, and again, I understand what you're saying. Based on my feeling and going through the interview process, I believe both candidates can do exactly what the job is that we want. Is one, one has more government experience than, but is, does it, in my opinion, does the difference in cost justify that? I don't believe so. And, you know, it's a significant difference in range. So I don't think, again, is she qualified in some areas more than the other? Yes, but I don't think that those qualifications justify the difference.
Is there, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Is there consensus among the committee as to a candidate, as there was last time?
We haven't got to that point, that's...
Oh, okay, I didn't, I'm missing this thing.
That's where I've been trying to...
Oh, okay, I didn't get that piece to it, okay, sorry, okay. Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would ask that, or move that if the committee has not come to consensus, that this be tabled until a point that that has occurred, because I think it would be difficult for us to make a decision if the committee hasn't.
All right. Is that a motion in?
Yes.
Table?
I'll second it.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The only thing, again, along with that, and I have no issues with the motion, it's just that we, you and I as the committee, along with Cory, in my opinion, need to keep this moving forward, because obviously, I guess, if I were in Cory's position, I wouldn't want to invest a ton of time and energy training any particular individuals until we, you know, make that decision.
Well, I think it's probably, need to make sure the candidates are still interested too. So I think a phone call there would be appropriate once we've had a discussion, so. I agree, we need to move forward, so. I, I do think that, you know, 50% higher or 40% higher isn't, is not a value at this point for the, the, not that much significant difference in qualifications. So, all right. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Carries? The operating expenditures, we talked at the workshop about tabling this until the staff could be involved with coordinating our various policies. Is that still the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I, I've been going back and forth, and I'm, I'm just thinking, I think if, we probably can't come to the conclusion, there was something said about a fixed dollar amount, so much per week, but then we're inconsistent, and I think if we continue this the next month, we can work with the staff to, to come up with something that matches, so we have a resolution that's acceptable, that matches our policy.
All right. So that being said, are you moving to table then?
Yes.
All right. We have a second for that?
Second.
All right. Motion to the second, table, and work with staff on getting it done for next month? Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Do we want to set any dollar amount for an interim? You know, say what hap, if something happens now and staff needs to do something, technically as of right now, they can't. So, you know, we, we've tabled this a couple of different times now, you know, and so again, I'm, the only fear that I have is something comes up and staff isn't able to react because they don't technically have the approval to spend any money.
Well, one, one of the things I know Joe's been really good at, if he has an expenditure, he generally contacts me, if we want to keep that going until we get this done, and just confirm that we're within the budget, and he's got somebody covering him from the council, if we want to continue that until we get this resolved.
Yeah, I haven't understood you said, it just, something...
So let's make that a motion then, that staff can, can continue to proceed in these situations with the verification or contacting the mayor to verify that we're working within budget.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we need to, from a point of clarification, do we need to, if we're tabling one, and do we need to vote on two separate ones, or can they be combined?
Let's table the one and make a second, second motion, so. So, all those in favor of tabling this to the May meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll take a second motion on authorizing the mayor to provide coverage, covering for staff to continue functioning as they need to.
So, I'm...
I'll second.
Motion to second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Just to confirm, when you say staff, are we, are we considering that as Cory and Joe?
Correct, I would say if Joe's, in Joe's absence, typically it'll come through Cory, but if, if it needed to come through Eric in emergency, I would, I would accept that as part of this. I would expect in Joe's absence Cory will be covering things, and Cory's absence, but well, I guess Alan would be covering things, so. So I would say staff would be the four full-time members.
Does that need to include the fire department coming from the chief?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville. I'm sure, Cory. So used to. Actually, the, the fire chief, if his expenditure is on our budget, otherwise, he operates out of Ramsey's.
Right, if it, if it came back to our budget, I know that was mentioned at least as, as part of the resolution.
There's already authorization for the fire department for a thousand dollars.
Okay.
So they, that was proved.
Okay. I just know it was mentioned in here again, so.
That's what we want to clear it up, so. All right, anything else on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have an RCA for approving hiring seasonal employees, and Councilmember Rainville wanted to add something here.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would move first the, the initial motion, or the initial RCA put forward by Joe Glaze, adding to his request, I request the council's consideration in approving the request to hire seasonal park slash recycling employee at a rate of $11 an hour, not... hire seasonal park slash recycling employee at a rate of $11 an hour, not to exceed 40 hours a week, and to allow staff to hire a truck driver to assist in hauling gravel, not to exceed 40 hours a week and only when needed for hauling gravel at a rate of $15 per hour. I would add to that verbiage that Joe is required to approve, to receive approval from the mayor and a council member if he finds it necessary for the employees to perform work other than that specified in the RCA. And we'd have to, and I would be willing to be that council member.
I'll second that.
All right. We have motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
You know, looking at this motion and reviewing the workshop audio, you know, I, you know, I was kind of looking at this and it just, to me, it almost, we get to the point where we're micromanaging so much that we have a budget set aside for part-time employment. Councilman Rainville brought up and she said she audited the part-time employee last year that we did for gravel and X amount of hours were gravelling and X amount of hours were spent elsewhere. My whole thought on that is if we have, we hire a part-time employee at $15 an hour and we have them do something other than gravelling and they're productive and Joe thinks it's necessary, we're still paying a lot less than what we would be paying our full-time staff to do it. So, it's a benefit to the city to have that person do it. You know, you go, as an example, if all of a sudden the plan is to come in and gravel tomorrow, you know, or whenever the weather's nice enough, 7 o'clock, sunny outside, they want to start gravelling and all of a sudden an unexpected thunderstorm comes rolling in at 9 o'clock, soaks everything down so they can't gravel anymore. Are you going to send that person home after two hours or could Joe find something for that person to do for the remainder of the day that would be helpful at a much lower cost than regular city staff? Or, you know, but the way this motion is written, he can't do that because obviously he'd have to get permission from the mayor and one of the council members and he's not going to be able to get that permission immediately. To me, it's, it's just, we have them funds set aside in the budget for part-time staff. Staff is asking for two seasonal workers. I think we need to rely on that staff to, if they need to, they can assign those people to do other duties and again, it's a savings to the city because we're not paying our full-time staff to do those things. And by having them to have to come to us to get approval for them to do anything other than gravelling, to me, we're just micromanaging to death.
I think it's, you know, even though Councilmember Rainville did do an audit of last year's numbers, I think that, you know, Joe has been extremely responsible with how he uses staff that way. You know, I know last year that there were times when they didn't have things, people went home. It's raining and they can't do things, you know, he, I think we can trust him to, to manage that on, for the best results for the city. So, I agree with that. I think that my request would be that we, we submit the RCA as originally presented. I think there was some discussion at the workshop as to, you know, Joe's intention this year is to have somebody come in when they're hauling up to 40 hours a week, when they're not hauling and he doesn't need them. But there will be situations where Eric's gone or there's a bigger project where we may need somebody and, and I do think that, you know, Joe has shown responsibility in that area to, to manage that. And so, I would like to see it presented as submitted and, you know, if there's a problem, I think Joe's shown significantly, consistently, if there's something out of the ordinary, he's getting a hold of me and Cory, so we let the council know, so. At the workshop, we talked about if there's something other than this, rather than formalizing it, that two of the council members have to approve it, you know, have Joe communicate it like he's been doing, I'm going to need this. If he thinks it's a bigger issue, he gets permission first. If he's just notifying us, he's notifying Cory to notify the council. Trees dropped down in the road and I kept so-and-so behind to help us clean it up, you know, whatever the situation that might be in addition to gravelling. So, I, I'm, I'm one that would suggest that we submit it as it originally was and count on Joe to communicate to us anything out of the ordinary and to use his best judgment on utilizing his staff. So, I would put that to Councilmember Rainville and Bryan to, to consider.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I, and I'm fine with that. I guess more just to raise the issue in, in that last year, we gave permission to hire somebody to gravel and it was, a couple of times during the conversation, we were gravelling and that was it. And then, come to find out later, there was more than that. And I, you know, I understand things change, you got to get stuff done, but when, you know, about 33% of the person's time was not spent on what we as a council approved. If we want to move this motion with the understanding that Joe, based on his request here, will just be doing gravelling and if the need arises and he has to contact Cory or the mayor, that's fine. But I think that we need to stay in, in, we need to adhere to and have staff adhere to the motions that we made and the motion last year was to hire somebody just to gravel. So, I would amend my, my motion to go back to the initial motion.
Councilmember Bryan, would you still second that?
Mr. Mayor.
Let me, let me see.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Ricker.
Well, with that said, I would prefer it be changed so that you take the specific duties of gravelling out completely, you know, because again, if, I agree with what Mr. Mayor said as far as, I think Joe's responsible enough and he's, he keeps track of time, we have set money aside in the budget for part-time staff. He, he's the one who knows what this person should or shouldn't be working on. He uses them wisely regardless if it's gravelling, if it's painting, if it's fixing something, whatever. So, why, to go along with, again, what you're saying, why do we need to pigeonhole that part-time person to just gravelling? Why do we, why can't we leave it open and vague as a part-time person to help the maintenance department?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would, Councilmember Ricker, that's how the motion was present, or the request was presented to us. If the person who presented it would like to change it, if council chooses not to, that's their prerogative, but that's how they presented it. And again, I only did it because last year, it was presented to us as gravelling and gravelling only. And that isn't what happened and I just didn't want to see that occur again.
And I would stick into it because this is the way Joe presented it, that he was looking for a truck driver. We do have Steve as a part-time, but I, I could see if Steve's gone for whatever reason or Eric's gone for whatever reason, they may need that third hand. I certainly don't want to handcuff Joe for that, but he's requesting in this case, you know, a truck driver to haul gravel. And, and so, I'm compromising there saying, that's what he asked for, let's give it to him, but also give him the leeway to say, wait till things get done and somebody's sick or somebody's gone and I have a body available that I could do this. I think it's unreasonable.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have a person in, with us tonight. Why not ask if this is acceptable or, and again, you know, when you write up.
Okay, that, Joe.
When you write up an RCA, you write it up as your first thought and intended, but after discussion, obviously, things may change. So, now, given the information that he's.
Joe, you heard the discussion? What comments?
I'd like to change for everything, whatever I need him at. It's hard to find somebody that just comes in, just drives a truck. Mr. Rainville, for a week or so, they want to work, they want to do something. Me and I changed it to recycling, sanding, or whatever we need.
So, you would, you would have them as a seasonal worker 40 hours a week throughout the summer and fall?
But it'd be no more than 40 hours.
No way it'd just be over and I'd give to him.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton, do you?
Maybe it should just be stated as needed, but to stay within budget. And I think that's what intent, the raison d'etre probably was. It's just, now we're going to need to make sure, well, no, you just said gravel, it only says gravel and that's all you can use them for. I think, we're just kidding, we're micromanaging really, we're getting carried away a little bit.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I understand and we may be, it was, I know we discussed it for at length, that that person was just going to be gravelling and they didn't. So, if there's extra work and I appreciate Joe taking advantage of, of that employee, but we approved someone just for gravelling and that's how it was worded in here. If we want to change it, great, let's change it. If Joe can, can use them, then, then let's change it and just so everybody's on the same page and we're all, all clear about what that person's going to do.
How's this going to affect Steve who's limited to 32 hours a week?
I don't think I was going to do for the last year or so, save the taxpayers money, but it's a big deal, we don't need to hire anybody.
No, I.
If you have time around, we'll run it, we'll set.
Well, I certainly think it makes sense to have three people running the truck.
Because it's a big deal, if I save the taxpayers money, something.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Oh, I, I don't believe that, I'm not talking about saving the taxpayers money, Joe. I understand your need for wanting three people to help with gravelling. I get that, I understand that it's more cost-effective to do that. My issue is what the council agreed to last year is not what occurred. And so, in your request for this year, you're asking for just gravelling.
Okay, just get.
Okay. Let me finish. So, to give additional leeway, we had a conversation at the workshop to say if you have other things that that party can do, just get approval for it. We didn't say you can't. We were saying get approval for it. Now, if we want to change the RCA to.
Yeah, I'm asking for approval now.
And that's fine as long as that's what the council agrees to. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would recommend that we change the RCA submitted by Joe Glaze, to allow, to allow staff to hire a person not to exceed 40 hours at the rate of $15 an hour. Do, and just.
A seasonal employee.
A seasonal employee.
And we could even say their primary, primary function would be to haul gravel, but when not haul, hauling gravel, they are.
And they have to be qualified to haul gravel.
Correct. So, and that would be their primary function, but when not hauling gravel, they're able to help in the maintenance department in other capacities.
As needed by Joe.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Still modified? Councilmember Rainville.
I guess I, a question back to your question to Joe about the 32 hours for Steve versus the 40 for this. Should we be fair with our seasonal employees and they both be limited to 32? When you look back, when I look back at the, the time cards, there was only one week where there was 80 full hours or one cycle, payroll cycle, 80 hours. There was one that was 79, 272s, the rest were less. So, I would say if we limit both our seasonals to 32, then it's being fair to them and it also doesn't obligate us for benefits because our, it's under 30, 32 and under, you don't receive benefits.
Question Cory, if it's seasonal, do we don't, are we not required to do benefits?
No.
And if it's, if it's seasonal 40 hours, are we subject to unemployment? Didn't Steve hit us with unemployment that one year?
Yeah.
Well, anything is.
Yeah.
So, 32 hours would be awesome?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
Question for Cory. Is there a reason why Steve is limited to 32 other than higher restrictions?
Yes, because 32 and under, then he's not eligible for vacation and sick and holiday and those type of benefits.
Okay, so those, that 32-hour number came from us?
Yes.
So, then I would agree that. We'd be consistent with that then.
All right. So, you want to oppose it with the changes and set it 40 hours up to 32?
Yes.
All right. Would be modified to primarily, they have to be qualified to gravel hauling, but can be used, utilized as Joe sees fit to get the stuff done that he's, Joe needs done?
Councilmember Bryan. Seasonal, $11 an hour, parks and recycling up to 32 hours. Primary driver for hauling gravel at $15 an hour, not to exceed 32 hours a week and can be used other than gravelling as Joe sees fit, Joe's, Joe sees fit as needed. Do I have it?
I'll second that.
Is that what you understand, Councilmember Ricker? Is that going to work for you, Joe?
Yes.
All right. We have a second, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing, not all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, there was a second part to this, Councilmember Rainville wanted to address.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, at the Thursday workshop, I made a statement that I later learned was incorrect. I based my statement on my observations and comments made to me by residents in the construction industry, but I received an email from the supervisor, maintenance supervisor that my statement was incorrect, so I'd like to publicly apologize to the maintenance staff for my error.
And specifically this had to do with sealing the.
The ceiling of the, the deck at the, the ramp at City Hall, yes.
And you were wrong in public and so you were apologizing.
I'm apologizing in public, yes. It's the right thing to do.
All right. Thank you. Annexation update, I don't know if anybody heard, was there any discussion at Old Grove last night?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The last I looked, it was not on their agenda at all, whether they spoke to it or not, I haven't listened to the tape or the broadcast of it.
At this point, it appears that it's proceeding. The council's still in, in agreement that we are going to challenge. All right. So, we will, Cory, if you could let Bob know that the council is in agreement here and so we will respond when we have more information to respond to. Old Viking Assessment Options and Considerations. Couple of things have come up where people have asked about businesses paying more. I think one of the big things is the large lots that could be developed there. Did we want to have a consideration to have an option on lots that were to develop and have to use Old Viking Boulevard within five years of this? Is there anything we want to consider that would affect our assessments? There are some big ones that are for sale and they could, could end up with eight homes coming out onto Old Viking. Has anybody put any more thought into that on additional assessment options?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I recall during the presentations, those, if that was split into eight lots, then that would have, that extra assessment would be in essence deferred and then assessed at the time of sale? Is that how the wording goes or do you have, you can mix it up however you want?
Well, that was one of the questions that if you were going to defer something, one of the questions was, you probably want to see something that develops within five years. Beyond that. Beyond that, you're probably beyond the assessment, the effect of the assessment action. Question is, if somebody develops this year and we just put an assessment in there, do we want to approach that development? And if so, how do you do that? How do you write that in there? Because you've got to put numbers together that don't include that. But does everybody's assessment go down if those lots develop? Randy, have you had experience in that in the past?
Well, we did that with the Hundred Eighty-Fifth and Jasper, and it went down by the year. We, I think that one was a ten-year, we did over the ten-year, full ten-year cycle, and I think we did a quarter deferment for each lot that would have their access come on to affected projects. So if it's a development and they had no driveways coming on to the project, then there wouldn't be, there would be no assessments, but-
And so that decreases those that are still paying, then?
No.
How's that? Just goes into the-
That would go into the coffers.
Okay.
And you don't get a real lot, there's very few lots that were split, I think, on Hundred Eighty-Fifth and Jasper, there was a couple.
To me, it makes sense that, you know, if there are additional, especially some of the larger parcels that all, eight lots emptied on to Old Viking, that there would be an assessment there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I just want to clarify what Councilmember Benjir said. So if we did delay the assessment, that doesn't have any effect on anyone that's been assessed? Let's say we do it this year and they're assessed, but if there's a forty-acre property and we don't assess that-
If you assess it with deferments, they would pay at the time they-
They sell, okay.
They sell or develop that property.
Okay. But it does not affect the cost of those that are currently being assessed.
Correct.
Because they are there now, and so for people asking for that-
It goes into the coffers for future-
It doesn't have any effect to those taxpayers that are driving out onto it right now, so they may see that as a-
And Randy, you said that you, when you did that on Jasper and Hundred Eighty-Fifth, you held that for the full ten years?
Pretty sure it was ten years deferment.
Right, and it was a depreciating deferment, though.
Yeah, so each year it went down by one tenth.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
And what is the reason for that? Just because the road is depreciating?
Exactly.
Yeah, you got one less year on the, so you got a ten-year assessment, and they come in-
That was a total reconstruct, too, being this is an overlay, maybe five years is more appropriate.
All right. Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, again, it's not going to affect the assessments that we've shown today. So benefit to the residents now is not?
Yeah, it doesn't change the numbers we're putting together, but it is something that people that own that property will need to know as part of this, that there will be a deferred assessment if they're developing.
If we so choose to do that.
If we do that. And then, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Cory, is that then, does that stipulation go on the property at the county? And then, so when you go to sell that property or purchase that property, that's when they're advised, or?
Technically, well, we would advise the property owner of that, but technically, when people are selling, there should be an assessment search done anyways.
Okay.
And yes, it would be filed at the county, but for the deferred part, we have to defer back to the engineer every year to get the new rates of what the deferred assessment, because in cases where people are selling and stuff, and since it's depreciated, there's always a different grade scale that they have to go. It's kind of a mess, but-
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
In order to go back to the engineer to get that, too, I mean, that's going to, that'll cost us to do that every year. I mean, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but-
Because they have like a scale thing that they use, and I'm not sure what it was, we just recall, and they give us community help.
Okay.
All right. Would the council like to have staff investigate that? Consider it before we do our final presentation to the residents?
I think we should. Especially because we're doing it, we're splitting it by the number of parcels versus, you know, acreage. If I own a forty, and my neighbor owns a five, but we're both paying the same dollar amount, then I think we should defer it so that those-
But again, it's not going to affect anybody else.
It won't affect them, but they know that, people will feel better that, if and when it does develop, they-
New lots will pay into the pot.
If they sell within five, and platted out in five years. If it's platted in five years.
Yeah. It's not a given that that will occur, but if it does, then we do recoup some expenses on it.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure whether or not that would or could cause another public hearing portion for those specific properties. You don't think so?
No, because we haven't had the assessment hearing yet. That'd have to be known and decided, that'd have to be decided and known before the assessment I believe that it wouldn't hurt to call Bob to make sure.
All right, so does the council want to proceed, contacting the attorney and the engineer with that proposal?
I would be in favor of that.
All right, so consider that a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, other discussion?
We've done it, if we've done it in the past, I would say for consistency, we should at least look at continuing it.
Well, a thing to consider, too, is this is a unique ballgame, because the city's never invested funds into it. It's always been hundred percent resident-funded prior, so-
Right.
We're not necessarily having to look at, this is what we've done in the past, because we're doing something completely different than what we've done in the past.
But if they did develop in the past, then there would, they would have been assessed, because it was done in the past.
No, I know, I understand what you're saying, but-
Mr. Mayor. Just for one clarification, is there specific parcels, like are we just looking at forty-acre parcels? Are we looking at lots that could potentially be ten acres split into two? You know, you're kind of opening up different areas as well.
Yeah, because you're going to get the argument from the person who owns eighty, and somebody owning, well, this guy who has ten could actually subdivide it.
And it could, if you put two houses on it, where there was one before, that can be a deferred assessment. I think if it's developable, you include it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would say that this would include any lot that is developable, 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 you know, if you can split it.
Councilmember Benjir, is that consistent with Jasper and Hundred Eighty-Fifth?
Yeah.
All right, other discussion?
Seeing and hearing, not all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
One of the other options that was brought up, and mentioned it briefly, is the issue of businesses on that road. I'm wondering if we should ask for legal advice as to why you can or cannot do that? When I have a second, I could speak to that.
I'll second up for conversation.
Thank you. I see that, I can understand why residents are asking for it, because they see other heavy usage of that road, they have their one or two cars and they're only going in and out a couple of times a day. I don't see how you could actually do it, though. There's so many variables as to what kind of a business, how many vehicles, but if my business has less vehicles than your house has, because you have six kids and they all have a car and friends, and, you know, unless there's some legal or precedence set by other cities as to doing that, I don't know how you would assess a business differently.
You'd have to define what the business is, you know, someone's got an IUP, a CUP, a farm, a legal business versus a non-registered business. I think it would be difficult, and you'd have to say, okay, is this business truly doing something that's using the road more than somebody else? I think that the better is to make sure you've got the roads rated properly and keep the heavier equipment off. If you've got the road rating on there and people aren't driving heavier equipment on it, yeah, somebody with eight kids and a bunch of them drivers might be using it more than the business technically. And I think of the auction businesses up there, how many people are coming to pick things up? Is that more significant than, you know, somebody with the big tractors?
Councilmember Benjir.
The biggest thing, though, is value. You'd have to prove that their value increase more than a regular residential home. That may be really hard to prove.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I think it would be very difficult to prove. And if you look at just IUPs or just CUPs, there are some that have very little traffic, if any, go in and out. So how do you differentiate between that?
So at this point, because of the makeup of our community, you know, I think that it would be best not to approach that. It's not something that's easily defined and controlled, so I would recommend that we just not pursue additional cost to businesses.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, yeah, and I agree, because to go along with that, you know, I could be a, you know, a construction worker who runs a dump truck all day long, and there's days where I don't go back to the job site, so I drive my truck home. You know, and I'm with that truck, I'm putting more wear and tear than the average guy in his sedan, but again, I don't have an IUP or CUP, but I'm putting more wear and tear, but there's no way to regulate or control that, so.
I think we determined that the school buses and the garbage trucks are probably the most damaging right now.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
It sounds like council is not interested in looking to assess businesses separately or in a different fashion, so I would withdraw my motion.
All right. Anything else on the Old Viking options? Seeing and hearing, then we'll move on to rescheduling the comp plan workshop. I think we determined that the, May seventh or ninth, Monday or Wednesday, seem to be, otherwise, it looks like it's after the eighteenth. Have they got a preference? Actually, seventh, ninth, or tenth, Thursday is another option.
Rather not the tenth, you're getting close to, I'm guessing opening fissions by that weekend.
Mother's Day.
Mother's Day, yeah.
Yeah, Mother's Day is the thirteenth.
Seventh or ninth, Monday or Wednesday? What's a?
Ninth.
Ninth? How's that a training night?
Yeah, but I can go morning.
Okay. Cory, work for you? All right. May ninth, seven o'clock?
Councilmember Bryan. Motion to adjourn.
Being adjourned. Okay, we beat Oak Grove.
Nine minutes. Nice call.
She still went over, though, just for the record.
It's always because he was talking.
We started four minutes late.
Yes, if we had have started on time, we'd have been perfect.
Five minutes late, so four. What's that enough?
I apologize.
Um, tables?
Tuesday.
There is a Fort Lyons meeting tomorrow, or Thursday night, so we could leave the tables up.
Did you smash that alarm clock in the budget room yet?
Nope. Don't turn it on.